Call me in order. Do you have an invitation?
It's on the schedule, but I don't see him here, so someone else wants to offer it.
You would like to offer an invitation? Saying I will pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are, under executive session, we do have two executive sessions tonight. The first one will remain confidential business data, but the second one is going to be attorney client privilege.
Motion?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Bellin to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to public comments, this is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody here for public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to proclamations and recognitions in your presentations. This would be the Brown Grand Review Annual Presentation.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Melissa Swinton, I'm the Director of the Brown Grand Theater. And I would like to introduce two of our board members who are here with us this evening. Dr. Monty Wentz, he's the Chairman of our Board, and then we have John Paul Rowe, who is our Secretary Treasurer of the Board as well. It has been over a year, if you can believe it, since the Brown Grand has presented a formal update to the City Commission. And I'm happy to report that we have good news to share. However, our good news also comes with goals and projects we are working on to maintain the historic theater we all know and love. The good news, 2021 brought many successes to the Brown Grand Theater, many of which you have already seen in the handout that accompanied your commission packets for this meeting. Some of those highlights include hiring a new director, myself, I started almost a year ago on April 1st last year. And since then, we have received 11 grants that total over $48,000, $48,000. Had his, had a historic replica of the Napoleon curtain fully restored, thanks to a grant from the Community Foundation for Cloud County. We've held or hosted 15 rentals, five shows, three paranormal groups, two ghost tours, and a Brown Grand Theater's players production. With many more rentals, ghost tours, and performances coming up. We updated the Brown Grand website logo and branding, which I hope you noticed on your handouts this evening. We had over 525 hours of volunteer time from our Board of Directors last year. The Brown Grand Board of Directors is growing and thriving and are looking forward to planning for the theater's future. And it is an honor to work alongside such a dedicated group. Their energy is truly contagious. And even after a two-hour meeting, they tend to leave with a little pep in their step because of the work they're doing for our community. Together with the City of Concordia, we have completed over $22,000 of work since 2021, with more to come this year. Including the tucking, pointing, and waterproofing of the exterior of the building, which will hopefully take place mid-May. And the West Parking Lot Project, which is currently in progress, and we are daily watching for the demo to happen. We are happy to report that our budget increased by 29.27% from 2020 to 2021. Not including the seating the next generation Capitol campaign that brought the theater 432 brand-new seats. And the return of the bench-style seating in the second balcony in 2020. As we all know, 2020 also welcomed COVID-19, which the Brown Grand saw a loss of over 90% of earned revenue. We have slowly been recovering, and we have slowly been seeing our patrons return to the theater this year. Like many theaters across our state, we were hit hard by the pandemic. As we look forward to the future, we have much to celebrate and to maintain. September 17th later this year will mark our 115th birthday. Which is cause for a huge birthday bash, but you'll have to stay tuned for more details to come on that. However, it is also the cause of many upcoming projects. The Board of Directors has recently approved the following projects. The purchase of children's booster seats. New landscaping to be added once our new orphan train statue is revealed this June. And that will help enhance our curb appeal. The custom build of new concessions and merchandise display cakes on the main floor from past to present construction. And a one-man bucket lift, so we can better access stage lighting on a regular basis without constant renting. Additional future projects we are working to address include fixing and repairing our ringing system. Renovating the basement staircase, which is coming in around $25 to $3,600. Adding hot water to the main floor restrooms, which is just over $3,000. Updating, replacing stage lighting, updating the ladies' parlor, which is coming in around $20,000. Renovating the gallery bathrooms, fixing and repairing the plaster walls throughout the theater that have large cracks and many holes. Adding air conditioning and showers to the upstairs dressing rooms, new carpet, looping devices, stage extensions, and more. We would formally like to request that the new roof for the Brown Grand be added to the city's 2023 budget. The current bid from Geisler Roofing is approximately $73,000 as of March 11th. If possible, we would also like to have funding to support and to fix our and repair our ringing system. This project was done as part of the Save Our Stage campaign in 2014 and 2015. However, the platform was built too big and now requires three to four people to operate safely. It also causes the ropes to rub on the platform, the sandbags to get stuck underneath the platform. And makes it very difficult to operate. This has become the number-one focus of the Board of Directors for safety and liability purposes. We also want to maintain our credibility as a theater that can handle the needs of prospective groups wanting to rent the theater. And we want to use items like drop curtains that we saw in the Nutcracker just this last December. Or hanging additional lighting for their performances. This project is currently being bid out, but will cost over $100,000 to fix. And may require the theater to be closed for up to two months while the repairs are taking place. I have also been working with Amy to secure a one-man bucket lift previously mentioned. We have requested that the city make the purchase, which the Brown Grand would reimburse to save on taxes. Finally, I just want to thank you all. We can't thank you enough for your support and for getting out and being seen at the Brown Grand. Your presence at the theater and in our community speaks volumes, and we want to thank you. I would also like to thank Amy for her ongoing support and for our monthly check-ins to make sure we are on the same page about our progress. We have a very busy few months ahead at the theater, and we hope you will join us at the Brown Grand for the variety of cultural events taking place in our own backyard. You are always welcome, and I would be happy to take any questions at this time that you might have.
Will there be any type of, like, in terms of going after grant funding and other types of funding for both of those projects you mentioned? Are you, what are you pursuing?
So, for the ladies' parlor, we are pursuing a DAR grant that we won't hear about until May, but that's already been submitted. We will be going after the Wind Farm Grant that's due March 30th. Also looking at the Ducoast Foundation coming up locally. And we've already received a grant for the Missoula Children's Theater from the Community Foundation to come back this summer. So, we are seeking some grant support for those additional projects. But we have so many that we need to kind of do a chain reaction, so we prioritize those projects with the Board. To happen kind of one at a time.
But nothing for the roof or the ringing system that would all be just asked from the city?
Nothing for the roof, because I think contractually that is the city's responsibility. And then for the ringing project, we are still waiting on final numbers and what the exact plan will be before we can put a grant proposal together. So, we have a meeting on the books actually next Monday with the architects, the engineer, and the ringing inspector to see what the plan will be to make that project happen.
I also appreciate your social media posts, which are excellent. I love your videos, they're very good.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our action agenda, the minutes of the March 2nd, 2022 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of March 2nd.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bellin, seconded by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of the May, March 2nd, 2022 meeting. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number five.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number five. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz, seconded by Commissioner Bellin to approve appropriation ordinance number five. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Resolution 2022-2132, the condemnation of 717 Olive Street.
Commissioner, this is a result of fire damage home. And we received insurance proceeds off of, and within 45 days, we have to start condemnation process. And that allows us to hold the funds, basically. In, forever until it gets fixed or we decide to take it down. And so we'll see what happens, but anyway, this gets the process started, and then you see where's. A lot more, you have to advertise it twice, and then 30 days after that, have a public hearing, and then Mary make a determination, and we'll see what happens from now on in. But the owner will get a copy of this, and then we'll go from there.
I move to approve resolution 2022-2132.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Lambert, it's a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve resolution 2022-2132. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Resolution 2022-2133.
429 West State, this house is. If anybody's familiar with this neighborhood, this house has been deteriorating for many years. And it is about the only lighted house in a, in a pretty good area right there, and a lot of good. People in that neighborhood keeping their houses up and their long thing paying really well. So, I thought I would throw this one in, I think we'll have a, we tied on budget, we've got a lot of stuff going on, so. I want to get this one, because I think it may spur a new development. So, I want to.
This is immediately east of a, of a house that was demolished three, four years ago. This is immediately east of a house that was demolished three, four, five years ago, something like that.
Right next door. We, we received a house, a gift of a house from Wells Fargo with a loan with a $10,000. Gift to tear it down, and we had enough extra money that we put the leftover into a brand-new sidewalk, public sidewalk, and then we put the rest into the.
Which, this, it looks like it's been delinquent on taxes since 2014.
Quite some time.
Then there's never been a sheriff's sale or any attempt to do any of that.
No, and, and. To be quite honest, I'd like to get some, like, before they put a sheriff's sale, because then you never know what is going to happen.
Sure.
So, yeah. This was high on my list, I've notified the owner, truly, I've got an example, I think of a letter in there that I sent a while back, maybe not, I got it in my files. I sent, you know, recourse the owner, and we've, we've done nuisance abatements on this a few times also. I don't know who's maintaining that, we haven't mowed the yard for a while, but I suspect maybe the neighbors doing it is to.
And just, just a reminder for the commission, when properties go to sheriff's sale, they wipe off all specials, all the back taxes and the.
Special possessions against you.
From nuisances except for the current year, so if they haven't been paid yet, and it goes to sheriff's sale this next time, we, we won't see any of that anyway.
See much of this.
Nobody leaves a nice area there. No new homes.
I, I have had inquiries about interest in that lot. Get that out or gone. But. You know, that's about far you can go, something like that.
Is there, the lot, just one lot next to it?
Well, well, the lot next door was purchased by a neighbor, and we put that up for sale, and they purchased it. And. Park there, I'll be there, basically cover it in the winter, then they little gravel parking spot in the back of the alley. This house is right next door.
I would move to approve resolution 2022-2133.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lambert, seconded by Commissioner Hash to approve resolution 2022-2133. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now onto the Frank Carlson Library Board appointments.
Sheriff Commissioners, Library Director Dean Sturridge Reynolds has requested Commissioner's appoint Lori Lowell and Alicia Seid to the four-year terms for the Library Board, effective May 1st, 2020. 2022, I believe, so, one's already, already last year. Their expression of interest forms are enclosed for your reference, and we need to ask for your consideration.
That's all good candidates. I move to approve Lori Lowell and Alicia Seid to four-year terms on the Frank Carlson Library Board beginning May 1st, 2022.
A motion by Commissioner Lambert, and a second by Commissioner Wentz to approve, to appoint Lori Lowell and Alicia Seid to four-year terms on the Frank Carlson Library Board beginning May 1st. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now onto the Police Department vehicle.
This is Mayor, Commissioners. We're having to change up our routine a little bit compared to what we've done in the past. The Highway Patrol no longer has the explorers, or they want the Dodge Durangos. We are in need of another vehicle, I mean, they're only like to stick with the makes that our local dealership sell. So, I reached out to Farm Country Ford, Concordia Chevrolet. And then Superior Emergency Response Vehicles in Andover, Kansas, they specialize in purchasing new vehicles and outfitting them. They just deal with emergency vehicles. Lot of agencies do business with them. Anyway, Farm Country Ford had the lowest bid at $47,154.22. And this would be for a vehicle that's a 2022, fully outfitted, ready to go for patrol use. I apologize, I think you ended up getting two. Equipment lists and that thing, I didn't mean to do that. This vehicle would replace a 2014 Chevy Impala. We're trying to get our, our vehicles all-wheel-drive for the hilly town that we live in. The Chevy Impala has 78,808 miles on it. But we've had a lot of issues with it, seems like every time we turn around, it's in the shop. And now, according to our two mechanics that we have. Two officer with mechanic background, gonna take probably $7,000 to get it functioning. And then it's pretty much wore out, it's got other issues, so it would be a matter of time for it back in the shop, so. I just recommend that we prove a purchase of the 2022 Ford Explorer from Farm Country Ford, in the amount of $47,154.22.
So, can we get along, along with, out it, I mean, there's quite a bit of lead time, it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be okay. We're kind of hurt right now, because there was one vehicle that was kind of crashed up in that chase. So, we're, we'll do insurance stuff on that. And we'll kind of find out more information on that, on that one, and go from there.
Would there be a reason other than. Farm Country is local, that we wouldn't go with a company that specializes in the first responder vehicle? I mean, other than.
Farm Country did local.
Okay.
And Farm Country also offered to do the install, very reasonably, so. I mean, other than that, no.
That they've worked on. Our vehicle, are your vehicle before.
Yeah, yeah. I always appreciate the opportunity to try to keep our dollars as close to home.
I would move to approve the purchase of the 2022 Ford Explorer from Farm Country Ford for $47,154.22.
There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Bellin, a second by Commissioner Wentz. Is there any further discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the manager's report.
Mayor Commissioners, a few quick things for you. Listen, we mentioned the Sixth Street Parking Lot Project, getting the houses demolished. Our demolition contractor slightly delayed due to a family emergency, but does intend to begin work next week. The completion date is still good of April 4th, 2022, so we will see this come down very quickly. Also, I had a couple of questions, people asking if we're doing the citywide cleanup this year. We are doing that, we're not quite yet ready to advertise that. We were called last year and the year before when we advertised it extra early, things started coming out immediately. And then we had several weeks of items sitting on the curb. So, we're going to wait a little bit before we introduce that information, just to kind of minimize the time that items are on the curb. But that will happen again this year. Also, we ended up selecting Fuller Bates as our new public works director, and he'll begin work next Monday, so we're excited to welcome him aboard. And then this afternoon, we did provide a quick turnaround written testimony in opposition to House Bill 2837. And that is the House's compliment to the Senate, Senate Bill 87, that we've been talking about, the countywide sales tax. The rework of the formula for appropriations, which means that the counties could unilaterally pull their sales tax. And when they reintroduce a new sales tax, if it passes, they get to keep all the money, and then we have to go request it from them. Right now, state statute requires them to give us a portion of it based on our population and our assessed valuation. So, that, that bill has potential to hurt cities, so the municipality is strongly opposed to it. And we did provide that somewhat testimony, I did email you a copy of the testimony, it was, but it's, you do have that in your inbox. That, I don't have any other items for you, so if any questions, happy to answer them.
Sack reports?
King asked me to give you an update on the CDGB demo-only grant, the progress on that. And I was prepared to come here and tell you that four of them are complete, but I went by. Number four this morning to check on the progress, and he was on the number five, and I got around there about 3:30 in the afternoon. And 85% of number five was gone. And I suspect it's all gone except for the hole. Now, so we have five out of 12 complete, except for the back fill. And the guy's been very good at cleaning and sloping, back sloping the hole. But I think he's going to come back with a load, just start hauling loads. And he was kind of waiting on, he's got a vehicle that's given transmission in place. In Lloyd, so he's waiting on that, and then I think he's going to start hauling, so. And then I wanted to just mention, they got 12 CDGB houses. Coming down, we got two brown groundhouses coming down, we approved one demo program application. If these two condemnations come down this year, that'll be 17 houses. In one year. And I'm not sure that's an accomplishment, but the only comment I would like to put out there about that is. They don't go the way they used to.
Finally, after waiting many, many months, the work on these towers beginning to be painted. So, what they have to do is move all the wires to both cell companies. And then they can, that'll take about four weeks, and then they can start painting after that. So, they were, they were saying within. Four weeks, middle of April, late April, we'll start making, so that's good news. And our new logo will be up on that tower. We're on this kind of the southwest side of the north side, so it'll be pretty cool.
I'm just really thankful it's not the Tennessee Volunteer. Logo that originally. It was an orange and black, the orange and white, I think, checker.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, we just, we found that out last minute, or otherwise it would have been that.
That got from small.
Yeah. Thought I mentioned some, you might have some curiosity in the announcement from Senator Moran, that some money was going to come our direction. We found out yesterday, it's going to be $310,000. That's some really good news to be used towards the communication project. So, other than that, I'm not sure what we're doing yet, so we got to put some thought into that. Try to get our, our system where it's, it's second to none, or that kind of resources to work with, so.
How did they pick Concordia? Did you apply it?
They reached out to us through email, and it was probably about a year ago. And so I responded to them and kind of told them what we had going on at the time, that was right when we started that, the communication project. And at that time, we're kind of trying to figure out ways to fund it. Well, this would be cool, if we could do a little bit of money that way.
Department of Justice grant.
Yes. It's the Department of Justice, so we'd have to get it by basically applying for it like you would a grant, but this is not a competitive thing. You still have to pay for it, and then we get the money. It'll be available late spring or summer, when we have the opportunity to do that.
That's great.
Any other staff reports? Okay, we're looking at an executive session for confidential business data. Oh, wait, sorry, I did it again. Mayor and Commissioner comments and reports.
She's telling you.
Nope. I know.
I'm just excited to see kids out and about. You know, we have made a lot of investment in our parks, recreation areas, and it's exciting to have weather. And plenty of playgrounds for kids to be out playing around on. Nice time of year, hopefully it could stick around fairly consistently moving.
I have nothing. I'd like to make a comment for Bruno, that I've heard really great comments about your inspections of the hospital and another daily. And just really appreciate your work with that. Awesome, I like working with you. Okay, and I have nothing else, so now we will move on to confidential business data.
I move that the City Commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data or trade secrets of a business, KSA 75-4319B4. With Amy Lang, Justin Farrell, and Cody Odette in attendance.
No. No Cody?
John.
That'd be the first one, so we're going to the second one.
Okay. Oh.
John.
John Leager.
Leager.
John Leager in attendance, and to reconvene in the City Commission Chamber at 6:20.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Hash, a second by Commissioner Lambert, to move into executive session for the purpose of confidential business data with John Leager and Amy Lang and Justin Farrell in attendance, and to reconvene in the City Commission Chamber at 6:20? Yeah. If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
How's it true?
Details.
No action was taken. Looking for a motion to move back into confidential or executive session confidential business data.
I would make a motion to. Move the City recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data or trade secrets of the business, KSA 754319B4. With Amy Lang, Justin Farrell in attendance, and to reconvene in the City Commission Chamber ten minutes at 6:30.
Second, I can, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, no action was taken. Moving on to our next. Moving on to our next executive session.
I move that the City Commission recess into executive session for consultation with an attorney for information being privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 754319B2. Amy Lang and Justin Farrell in attendance, and to reconvene in the City Commission Chamber at.
15?
Let's try 15 minutes to start, so to reconvene at 6:47.
A motion by, oh, second, there's been a motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hash, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And there was no action taken, so now we would move on to. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Lambert, second by Commissioner Hash to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. We are adjourned.